One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hawk? Eddie?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Woods?
Here.
Beeson?
Here.
Seven A zero A's.
I consent to agenda items, we'll go to the approval of amendments at previous meetings, the payrolls ended this Christmas. Make a motion to approve the seven agenda items.
Seven.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
Looks like Kent and Associates have about seven hours of things to attend to.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it quick. First item we have for tonight would be the loan dispersment number seven, amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. That's for the back building that I wanted to.
Make a motion to approve loan dispersment number seven, amount of thirty-five thousand, seven fifty-six, fifty-two. Any discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Schneider?
Yep.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
Second item is consideration to approve the unserved communities facility plan. That was a document that the city received a grant for, and the grant was you, the city would receive half of it upfront, half of it upon completion and approval of the document. The program was a two-part program, they had grants available for the planning document, kind of see if it was a feasible, if there was any feasible way to provide sewer to unserved communities. The second part of this program is construction grants. So there was a design gap in there, but at least the city was able to see if it was feasible to construct it. We looked at the area out around the lake. Our recommendation, I think those that reviewed the document agreed, is that it's not real feasible to provide sewer to that community with the grand dollars that are available. If, if they were to be a self-sustaining system, I think that the average bill was estimated to be around a hundred and sixty dollars a month just for a minimum, just to cover construction costs. If you spread it out over the whole system, it's a little over eleven dollars per customer entities. So I guess the motion we would be looking for is, is one, to approve the planning document, so that we could submit it to where the city could get reimbursed for those costs. The second would be to make a motion not to pursue any type of funding or additional projects to provide sewer in that area.
I'll make a motion to approve unserved community facility plan. Second? Any discussion or questions? Take a roll call vote.
Stevens? No. Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yep.
And I'll make a motion. And I'll make a motion not to pursue funding for future work on this project. Second? Any discussion or questions? Roll call vote on that.
We would say to not.
Make a motion not to pursue. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no questions, take a roll call.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
This was a fifty-two million dollar project, and we can only get funding for five million dollars if possibility.
Third item we had was consideration to approve the lead service line replacement plan. That's another document that was put together with the grant that was secured. Did we secure that? For the lead service line replacement plan? Oh, I think we did get a grant for it. I think we did, I think it was the same half upfront, half later.
Yeah.
Whether you received a grant for it or not, it was a document that had to be done, based on the new regulations for lead service lines. So we put the plan together and put some estimated costs for the projects down based off the numbers that we received from the city as far as how many lead service lines are in the system. And we ended up breaking down the projects into, I think, four different sections to try and maximize funding the way it's currently set up. But that, that document also has to be approved in order to receive the second portion of that grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the lead service line replacement plan.
Second?
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
Fourth item is to have the, authorize the mayor as a cemetery for the wastewater treatment plant funding documents. Really, all that's doing is giving the mayor permission to sign the documents that are needed to apply for the funding through EPA SRF, so that we can get them submitted into the funding agency and hopefully get some favorable funding funds for that project.
I'll make a motion to authorize mayor as cemetery for wastewater treatment plant loan documents.
Second?
I think this is always standard on these projects, any? Any questions or discussion?
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
The fifth item is for engineering services, we've been at Associates for construction services on the wastewater treatment plant. That's both bidding and construction phase services, so once the design is complete, we have the funding in place, we put the project out for bids, then what our services entail for the bidding phase would be receiving questions from the contractors going back and forth, working on that. Then the construction phase, that covers a twenty-four month term of the construction contract, and make sure of full-time and part-time as needed, while the contractors are out there working.
Make a motion. Second? Second, any questions or discussion? Roll call vote on that.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
Uh, the sixth item, we were hoping to get this agreement in front of the council last week, ended up not getting it until later this afternoon. It's a, it's about a ten thousand dollar agreement with heart deeds. There are MEP consultants, so anything mechanical, HVAC plumbing, they do that on some of our larger projects for us, so if, if got to want to pursue that tonight, we can, if not, because you haven't seen it, you understand that if that wants to be deferred until the next meeting, at that point, it will be fairly important to get that approved at the next meeting, because these, these contracts help increase your scoring with the EPA SRF that we have them signed and sent in, and those will be due and then in March. So either way, council will pursue that.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the engineering service agreement with heart deeds. Second? Second, any discussion or questions?
Have you seen it, Steve?
No, I've not seen it, I'd suggest you make the condition on my review. We have some standard language included in those.
Roll call, roll call motion.
You want to make a condition on my?
Yes, we're making a condition, because they gotta have it at the end of the month. Okay, so on your conditional review and approval, then we will go forward. So we have a motion, now we just need to vote, right?
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
The final item for tonight is the agreement for the archaeological reconnaissance survey with U of I. That is for the transmission main replacement project, and it's just one of the things that we had to jump through in order to get funding.
Make a motion to approve the archaeological reconnaissance retransmission main line.
Second?
Any discussion or questions?
That one's for Sixth Street?
Yes.
No. The old one was, they've already done the Sixth Street one, this is for, didn't you ask if that was for?
The transmission.
They completed that, I watched them do it.
Archaeological?
Yes, I think this is, this is the third one that we were gonna have done.
The lines around the thing, isn't it? We've done one for the sewer. They did something on it. And then the second one, I don't remember what it.
It went down Sixth Street.
They did something on Sixth Street.
Four people.
Because I had to do it.
Yeah.
I thought it was archaeological.
I think if you read it, it's the, it's the other side of the lake, that's what I've been telling everybody.
This one?
Because I thought it said one side of the road, only need to reach there.
That's Sixth Street.
Huh?
Yeah.
I should have shut up, but I, I thought I read the one last week that was for the.
No, you're right, Greg, you're absolutely right. This, this one, sorry, this one is for the water main extensions project going around the lake. You're right, Greg, you're absolutely right.
Thank you, Greg.
I'm not somebody that's.
You're horrible.
No, right. And that's how it is stated on the documentation that was sent over.
So we have a motion and a second, right, to clarify, so we'll take a vote.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
Let me know if we find the arch or cut under something, otherwise we'll move on.
Will do, thank you.
Can you explain on wastewater treatment plant and the lead service line, what those are mandates that we've been forced to do? We've been dealing with this for three years. The one being the regular two.
Yes, so, um, the wastewater treatment plant, the, the reason that this, this project is, is coming to fruition is because every so often the state issues what's called NPDS permits. So basically, the permit's letting the wastewater treatment plant to discharge to waters of the state, so the creek that's out there. And what that permit has in it is maximum limits of, in this case, phosphorus that can be discharged. So there's only so much phosphorus that can be discharged for volume of water into that stream. The current plant, the way it's designed, isn't capable of reducing enough phosphorus to get it below those limits. Therefore, new technology is required. We're incorporating some additional technology for other items that are testing for, in anticipation of lower limits being brought up in the future, the main one being nitrogen. So that's, this project's due to a new permit requirement. And given our ability in that boat, there's a lot of plans that are going to do the same thing right now. Fortunately, I think pain is out ahead of the curve as far as being able to obtain some funding for that. The lead service lines, that's a regulation that was passed in twenty-twenty-one, the fall of twenty-twenty-one, went into effect January of twenty-twenty-two, and it's called the Lead Service Line Replacement Notification Act. And there's a federal regulation, there's an IDPH regulations that also came into play, but the state-specific one requires that if you have lead service lines, you have to replace them. That's a very simple way of putting that act, because there's notification requirements, if you identify lead service lines, when you go to replace them, you can't do partials, you have to replace the whole thing, not only the city-owned portion, but the customer-owned portion to within eighteen inches of the first shut-off of the home. And you only have a certain amount of time to do it, so first step is identifying your lines, so you have to do a inventory, so every service line within the community or within the water distribution system, you have to identify the material when it was installed, size of material on both the customer side and the utility side. Then if you have any lead service lines, you have to do this lead service line replacement plan that was just approved tonight. And that kind of lays out the groundwork for how they're gonna be replaced. And then there's also requirements based on how many lead service lines are within the system, you have to replace those specific percentage per year. So in pain's case, you're gonna be at about seven percent per year.
Can we, just to put everybody at ease, it's not an issue currently, you can still drink.
Yes, so you don't have to do this because of any kind of contaminants in the water or anything else, it's just a, a regulation that was passed regardless of your water quality.
When they, when somebody switches over from lake water to, to well water, that could verse this buildup.
Yes, so a lot, a lot of times, that's what causes the issue with lead getting into drinking water, is the source water switching. Really, any kind of water chemistry change basically takes your water from scale forming to scale stripping. If you ever look at any of the lines within the system, they'll have like a white film on the inside, and that's a scale that's, that's built up over time, essentially providing a barrier between the water and the service line material.
Okay. All right.
Um, first item is the second presentation of ordinance in Xing property, this is the Buffett parcel out of the lake, and in order to approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, Eddie?
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Seven A zero A's, ordinance of nineteen twenty-two.
The second item is the second presentation of the ordinance approving the redevelopment agreement with Workshop Market Inc. I recall at last reading, I indicated that we were still in discussions about the final terms in the agreement. We've now reached a final agreement on all of the conditions in the agreement, and it would be in order for the council to approve this. You recall, the city is transferring property to the developer, and the developer will, within, basically, as soon as he get contractors here, he's going to fix the roof and do some masonry work on these properties, and then the agreement provides that redevelopment will take place in phases over a period of, the developer thinks he can get it all accomplished within five years, the agreement provides a little cushion of six years, but the developer thinks he can get it all done quicker than that, and before any, before the developer goes to any particular phase or redevelopment of the property, he has to submit plans for council review.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's, ordinance of nineteen twenty-two.
Okay, next item is an ordinance, first reading authorizing the sale of a certain property, basically declaring the property surplus and authorizing the clerk to advertise for bids.
Can we forego the first reading or the second reading?
Absolutely.
Make a motion to do that? Second? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's, ordinance of nineteen twenty-two.
And the last item I have is an ordinance creating a class P license, liquor license. This is known as a video gaming parlor license, and it's for those establishments, video gaming establishments, that have to have a liquor license in order to obtain their state video gaming license. But the sale of alcohol or food is an incidental part of the business plan, and are primarily engaged in video game. This is similar to an ordinance that the city of Decatur has and other municipalities have, and the fee for this type of ordinance is five thousand dollars.
Make a motion.
Well, we have limits on how many licenses we'll give out.
Uh, the council already has an ordinance that basically sets the caps, the number of liquor licenses available to those that are currently in existence, and if the council wants to issue additional liquor licenses, it has to create a new license under that particular classification. So it's actually a two-step process in order to issue a liquor license, first step being the creation of an additional license, and the second being the approval to issue that additional license to a particular applicant. So there's already a cap in place in the liquor code.
How many do we currently have on this?
Um, I believe there are, well, there are none right now for P, but there are two that qualify for a P license in the future. And they, they would, the council would essentially create a P license and issue it in the future of one of the current people who operate video gaming parlor supply.
Is there any way we can make the like distances bigger?
Uh, right now, the proposal is, I think, a thousand feet in separation between video gaming parlors under the, under the proposed ordinance.
There's time limits on it, we talked about that earlier, because we had one that had a license, they did it for two years, they finally opened it up. You say, earlier, we have, you saying that?
No, the, the current liquor code has a, I think it's a ninety-day provision that if the, if the business doesn't use their license within that period of time, then the mayor can't revoke it.
Why does it watch that from now? Absolutely. I want to clarify something too, for the papers, this does not affect barbers, restaurants, or gas stations, this is strictly gaming parlors. So we have a motion, and a second? Okay, we'll do the roll call vote.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven A zero A's.
All right, Greg, you're up.
Okay, I'm gonna tell a little story. And there was a guy named Matt, and he trimmed our trees, and he got a job trimming trees for his first grade teacher from way back, and was telling her about the ash bores at the park, and she whipped out a five thousand dollar check on him, she would like to remain unnamed. And then a couple, three other families put in a thousand dollars, and so Saturday, a bunch of people planted fifty-two trees between eight AM and one-thirty PM. And those people, now this were, this was trees at Kinsel Park, Summit Cohius, and Summit Weller. Ken's not here, I mentioned the dump part got missed. Anyhow, so the people that did that, that I'd like to thank are Matt Hardy, Audrey File, Jordan Beeson, Kent Taylor, Brian Blodgett, Chris Dressen, and then Chris has a list that he wants to thank.
Um, I took volunteers from the streets department, and we got Ross Pazner, Nathan Ewing, John Schaefer, and Nick Smart all went there Saturday to help look at the trees.
That's a little gray.
That's a little gray.
That's a hell of a story.
I think she ruined the ending. Okay, now the next item, uh, two-thirds of these ago, three guys went out to get a vote with Denny Lynch, Scotty and Justin and me, and we did a depth survey of the old part of the lake, basically from the middle dam north, plotted on diamond maps. Diamond maps have turned out to be a great thing. And the bid should be credited for that. Anyhow, we plotted a bunch of depths up there, and we found the middle dam, and what we were trying to do was, there was been talk of whether or not we should or could make it so both can get across the middle spillway from one lake to the other. And the, uh, the reason not to do that would be is if we would let a bunch of silt come in and foul up the part of the lake to drink out of. And that's, so that's what we were doing, we were told by an expert that if the silt, if the silting process hadn't reached that dam, it would be okay to do so. And what we did is basically verify that the, the silt numbers that we were measuring come pretty close to the nineteen, I think it was nineteen eighty, or was it older than that? This, the old topo map I found that was somehow converted to metric, matches everything from, uh, that middle dam clear up to Sixth Street, but on the north side of Sixth Street, we are losing depth. So that's, some, at some point, we're gonna stand up here in front of you and ask to build a big silt trap on the north end of the lake to start catching it up there. It just, as soon as it comes in, it slows down, it falls wherever it slows down, well, it's stacking up towards us. But, uh, it shouldn't be a problem on that, I don't know which committee's gonna tackle that, but we did get that done, and we need to thank Denny Lynch. And then, uh, Justin, a bunch of us have been looking for like a year at least at this nineteen forty-nine court case, when they made the, the new lake, and they had to take land from one landowner, and Justin did find it, I mean, he found the lady that found it. And so we bought that lady and everybody in her place pizza. And then Kim also found a resolution, they, they put the resolution together here in nineteen forty-eight in January to authorize the mayor and somebody else to go buy all the land they needed for the new lake, and one, one outfit held out, and it had to be taken through condemnation. And that's the thing we were looking for. Okay, then the, we, you know, in the course of all this, we did find some really cool plans of the old lake, and a bunch of information that Scotty read about in nineteen twenty-nine when a certain amount of people went out there and stood up, stood there and looked at the dry hole and thought they might want to go build the, the dam that we might want to take the spillway out of a little bit. We're working on making repairs to the library sidewalk, it'll be well under fifteen thousand, so we won't have to put it in paper, but we will get as many concrete guys as we know to give us a price on it. And then Justin was called to that coffee bean, uh, on a popular in Washington, what used to be a, a dry cleaners, it's now gonna be a coffee something, maybe it's a gambling inspection. Anyhow, for a building permit, we were called there to, to look at the paving plan, and it appeared they were gonna pave over two manholes and maybe out onto the right way of the highway, so Justin's gonna make them get a surveyor to show, um, that that's not happening, and we've talked to the D O T about it, and they may actually benefit from this, because we found this thing under fourteen inches of rock that they can drain their, their parking lot into instead of ruining it in the front door of the place, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Economic development?
Nothing to report at this time.
Nothing? Yeah?
I don't know anything tonight.
Pete?
Okay.
I do. There's been, with our ordinance officer, there's been an abundance of time I feel is wasted playing a dog catcher. Every day, he's out catching dogs all day long, and I think his primary focus should be on the task at hand, which is enforcing ordinance. We did some research, and we have some money in the budget that would afford a part-time animal control person. So what I'm asking is the council to make a motion in a second to allow us to pursue that venue, to not only hire one, but allow Justin to have more time. to not only hire one, but allow to have justice, Justin to have more time doing what he was hired to do. I'll make a motion, allow the mayor to, uh, do this.
Second.
Second, any question or discussion?
Uh, so it's in the budget?
For part-time, can't do it full-time right now, but part-time person.
For the new year, in the new year budget or this year's budget? Because I didn't think we had a new year's budget.
No, it's not in this year's budget, it'd have to be a new line item for next year.
So we.
We got rid of that line item.
What happened, going to, uh, what, will he be using his own vehicle?
We're gonna let him use the old vehicle till the wheels fall off, because you're gonna get a new one. It's got a cage in the back, he can use it for that time. I'm not too worried about what vehicle he's using, as long as it gives dude more time to go out, do what he needs to do.
Think he's gonna be an on-call person?
We haven't got that far, I don't know if we're gonna do on-call or just two or three days a week, it just, it just really depends. I haven't really ironed that out, and I just wanna kind of pursue this first, kind of figure out what we're gonna do. I'll bring it back to council once we have an idea of what this position's gonna look like, and then move from there. But right now, I don't, I don't, I just know that we need it, we don't have it.
But I think the last time we had one, uh, he wasn't able to be called, couldn't come in, the police ended up having to do it.
Yeah, I want the police to do it.
Tell it, I just be aware of that, yeah.
Well, Nathan, you and I have been talking about this for some time, and that, I know Justin, his apartment, you know, we've been using it a lot at the lake, we've been using him a lot. I, I work with Justin and Greg almost every day of the week up here doing stuff. And I think Justin's too valuable to be used running around chasing these dogs. And he's gotta think in the table, that's why we wanna put a kennel out back here so we can hold him for twenty-four hours so he can get other work done, because we've got people stacked up that, that he's gotta get paperwork finished, and he can't do it. And he's been trained on using a tranquilizer gun, so if something comes up, he still has to take care of that. But I think it's a good idea, we need to look into this. So we're gonna get a line item back in the budget to handle like you did before. That's easy enough. That's right. Chief?
I, I would suggest considering in and below dog bites, things of, there's more serious possible attorney involvement, court case involvement, lower levels where they're chasing dogs, hauling potato dogs.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's all I, you know, I, I'll work with you and Justin, we can come up with some kind of plan that would fit right within the city's budget, is what we need. But I just, you know, I call them all the time, it's, I don't have to chase a dog, I don't have to dog, dog call. And it gets him backed up, you know, Scotty eventually right, so I appreciate the council letting us pursue this. Uh, so we have a roll call vote in a second, conversation, uh, all the favors. All right. Both. And thank you, guys. Moving on to the courts committees, do you have any suggestions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to mention that we, uh, we did our I S O. survey recently, which is public certification. And the city was able to pick up another point this year, so that should reflect on the extension somewhere, I'm not sure how much that will. Um, the rural stayed the same, um, so we're about at a max there because of our water supply in the rural. But the city, we did pick up another point in town.
Good. Committee on. Yeah, a number of things. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve a vote dog application for Mark, because his fee is eighty-four and three.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Seven A zero As.
I'll make a motion to approve an oversized plot of H N eight with double fees that required to transfer a lease.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote there.
Eddie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Seven A zero As.
I'll make a motion to approve a sewer adjustment for Deleon Lopez of one ten West Second Street, amount of two thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, leaving a balance due of three thousand six hundred thirty dollars and forty-nine cents. This was for a major leak that they had that location, and also. Second. Second, okay, uh, let's do a roll call vote.
Schneider?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Seven A zero As.
And then, as everybody knows, a week ago, last Friday, we had a severe storm come through. I was up here at city hall reviewing paperwork with a city engineer, where we started receiving calls through the clerk's office. Uh, mayor declared emergency because, so we can get Matt and Hardy here the next day. We had no work orders, I wrote work orders, emergency work orders, per mayor's direction. I just wanna thank the mayor for declaring emergency, and I wanna thank Matt Hardy for coming over the next morning and working on this, and the street department employees for the cleanup they did, they did a really great job. We had two trees fell, two houses, one tree fell on a, on a S U V. We had quite a, quite a mess, and Matt was really, really good to come over Saturday and get a lot of this cleaned up. That's all I have. Okay, administration?
Nothing.
Community support? Nothing. Economic development? Negotiations? Nothing. Finished business? New business?
I do wanna say one thing, if the, um, I don't know, hope I'm not stepping on Beeson's toes, but we need to make sure we get our budget done. And so we've got some departments that haven't turned them in yet, so be thinking about that again, turn it in, please.
So is there something to address the council?
Um, there's just one question about that water thing, is it gonna make the water bills go up again?
The water thing?
The whatever water thing he was talking about earlier. I can't remember all the details. That was the only question that popped up, was, is it gonna make the water bill go up again?
It would depend on how much grants and loans we can get.
Okay.
But somebody's gonna have to go through that. And there's a possibility.
Can't say yes, you can't say no.
Gotcha.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion. Make a motion. Second. Thank you, everybody.